Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the City Manager said, I'm Lisa Reynolds, Director of Municipal Services and Deputy City Manager. Just want to take a moment tonight, or a few moments, to go through the six funds that comprise the Municipal Services Department. This is a very wordy and desperately in need of being rewritten mission statement, but the short story here is, the department's primary goal is, and mission, is to take care of infrastructure in both a proactive and reactive manner, as well as protect human health through the protection of the environment. And we do that through streets, sanitary, stormwater, construction, facility maintenance, environmental protection, water, you name it, we have a small piece of it. Obviously, with a department with that much reach, lots of connection to the city's action plan. Primarily an engaged community, our biggest connection here is simply outreach. So for every capital project that we do, we have at least two public meetings to solicit public comment and input on those projects. Just last week, we had one for the Winter Road Complete Streets. It was at Van Horn High School. So that's our primary form of outreach and community engagement. We also do things like household hazardous waste and other kind of recycling events for a form of public engagement as well. And a stormwater campaign that includes joining park occasionally for events like popsicles in the park to, again, just discuss the environmental protection angle. For an innovative economy, we have our connection to the action plan through business growth by providing infrastructure support and facilitating infrastructure construction to support development, and also partnering with the local school districts to provide job shadowing and internship opportunities. For financial sustainability, our biggest thing as a department is to control our long-term costs. We do this by trying to do as much proactive maintenance as we can, so we're not responding to things on an emergency basis, which always costs more money. But also, this year, and soon you will see, in July, we will be bringing to the PUAB and also to council the results of the sanitary sewer cost of service study. And we're also getting ready to kick off the... So, all part of controlling our long-term costs. Especially on the street maintenance side of the house, we apply for every possible grant out there. We do so on the water, storm, and sewer sides as well. There just aren't as many opportunities there. But every year for the last at least five, we've brought anywhere, we've secured anywhere from 15 to 32 million in grants annually. And you'll see that in some of the financial slides coming up. And then also with financial sustainability, working really hard to create replacement plans for equipment, vehicles, facilities, and things like that. So it's much easier to plan for when you set money aside in little increments over time, rather than, again, having a catastrophic failure and having to deal with it as an emergency situation. The department's greatest connection to the strategic plan is, of course, being a well-planned city, and our connection there is infrastructure. Infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. Again, we facilitate all but Power and Light's capital projects. We are responsible for the management of all vertical construction projects throughout the city. So currently, that includes municipal commons, three fire stations, and the renovations for the police headquarters. We facilitate multiple complete streets programs and projects, working on finalizing an ADA transition plan. One of our big programs that you'll see the numbers jump on is increasing the rate at which we replace water mains and enhancing our major corridors and gateways into the city. Accomplishments for this current fiscal year. I mentioned grants earlier. So this current fiscal year, we secured as a department $20.8 million in grants. We, these numbers are for this current fiscal year, so not the projects that you see starting up right now. So our pavement maintenance program addressed 90.24 lane miles last year, this current year. The square streetscape at long last is under construction, and the municipal commons facility design is complete and construction has officially started. This is just the org chart. It is one division short of what you saw last year, and that division is customer services. It has been transferred to Power and Light. And you'll see those numbers reflected here as well. This is our head count for the department. So as a department as a whole, we've gone from just under 240 people to just about 210. And again, the primary shift there is customer service transferring to IPL.
Do you want questions as we go?
As we go is great. However works best for you.
On the reduction in people in water, is that all customer service, all 30, or is that something else?
It's 29 in customer service, and we did eliminate a vacant administrative position on the water side as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So proposed budget. This is really big picture for the department as a whole. Our proposed budget for fiscal year '26 is $132 million and change. I know we're putting it as a department view, but I would really rather look at this slide just because I get a lot of questions and a lot of concern about making sure we're not mixing funds, and you can't use sanitary money for water, and you can't use streets for storm and all those things. So here's the breakdown by fund of the budget requests for this year. You can see the central garage is the smallest piece. The central garage supports vehicles for every department in the city and facilitates the enterprise lease program, with the exception of IPLs. And then general fund on up. And you'll see this $132 million number is different than our projected revenue of $92 million, and that seems very scary, that we're going to go and overspend by millions of dollars. The difference there is grant funding. So again, 20 million this current fiscal year secured on the street side. We're currently operating with $10 million in grants in stormwater. And so again, those discrepancies by and large are grant funding. Grant funding for municipal services is a little bit different than what you'll see in other departments that have recurring grants that cover salaries or programs. These are all project-based. So we bring the grant dollars in as more of a reimbursement as we spend during the project instead of having that money all up front. So while it says for the Inglewood Roundabout, we get $7.2 million grant, that doesn't mean they just send us a check for $7.2 million. So we factor it in, what we assume we will spend and get done in those projects. But again, the totals look a little wonky because the grant funding isn't included in the revenue projections. Another thing you'll notice in revenue projections, we try and be ultra-conservative and don't generally forecast insane interest amounts and things like that. On the utility side, we try and be really, really conservative, just, these are rates, this is what we know it's going to bring, and go from there. So any questions on revenues or budget? Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Right here. Oh, sorry. I recognized that.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
My fault, sorry. Pointing down here, and so, but you are next in line. I promise you, you're next in line.
Me too.
I know this is complicated, but where, so are the GeoBond funds in here?
They're not.
Okay. Can you talk about that?
Yes. So question two of the GeoBond was for $55 million. We actually had a call about that money being transferred to the city and just this morning about how we were going to take that and what installments and all those things. So breakdown, 10 million for sidewalks, and specifically sidewalks to seven elementary schools, two in Fort Osage District, five in the Independence School District, and then 15 million dedicated to bridges. We have a list of 14 that we're looking to address with those funds, some complete replacements to some just sealing the deck or refinishing the deck. And then the balance of that would go to overlay and partial and full-depth street repairs. So no seals, no crack filling, nothing like that, at a minimum overlay to full reconstruction on streets. And the plan of that is to spend roughly 6 million in overlay every year on top of the city's traditional pavement maintenance program. So we will, we've actually planned to send out two bid packages. We, in October, plan to send out the bid list to start in the spring for the GeoBond money for overlay. And then our smaller overlay package and the seals would be done in the later summer, fall. And that would be, that bid list would go out in the late spring of next year.
Anything else, councilmember? Councilmember Wiley, anything else? Thank you. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you. I was just going to say kudos for bringing in the $23 million in grant money. That's what we've been striving to do since 2018, for that. But we really, I think, started shifting gears and going after the grant funding as much as we can to help supplement what we don't have, other than paying our portion. So that's what a lot of the work that we're seeing is because of that. So kudos to you and your team for doing that.
Thanks, yes. That is all engineering, and they put in a lot of work, so I would be remiss if I didn't mention that, and hat tip to them.
Anyone else have questions? Please proceed.
Thank you. I'm not sure I'm on the right page. I'm on page 163 of the book, and I'm just looking at my funds here. It talks about the FTEs, which you discussed, 210, but I'm looking at my budget for '25, '26. Let me put my glasses on. If you'll go back to the previous slide.
Oh, this is on personnel, so.
Yeah. I show...
Do you want by fund?
Yeah. Our totals don't match up. So '24, '25, you've got 124, 141, 536. And I've got 123, 881, 536.
I am not sure, to be honest. I don't know if, when we pulled these numbers to prepare the presentation, we added something additional instead of taking straight from the budget book.
All right.
Alex might know.
Am I on the wrong spot?
Councilmember, I'm not 100% sure, but in the total that I have is 124, 141, 536. There is, I think, a different total that maybe is not pulling in something else at another section of the adopted budget, so maybe that's part of the discrepancy, and we can, if I could see yours, I could tell you exactly.
Okay. So I'm going to call those out as we go, because we want to be sure that we have accurate document. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else before we go on? Thank you, please proceed.
Okay. Again, so we've talked about revenue. So the last thing really that I need to, wanted to bring to your attention are budget packet requests. So budget packets are basically anything that kind of put us over what our expected spend was for the year. Generally, one-time expenditures, or, you know, in this case, once every 10 years expenditure, in the case of this mini excavator. It's a $95,000 purchase that will replace two pieces of equipment with this one, just gives us more flexibility in the field, and we will surplus the existing units to help reimburse the cost of this purchase if approved. And that's on the storm side, so stormwater fund. On the sanitary sewer fund, we have increases to our rates for Little Blue Valley Sewer District. This is an annual request, and this is an estimate based on their rate increases. It is still very weather-dependent, and so if we have a dry year, maybe we don't get into very much of this. But this budget packet is very specifically part of our inter-jurisdictional agreements, COW Center, and it is only spent on Little Blue Valley Sewer District fees, if and only if we need them. Otherwise, that money is returned to the fund balance. On the water side of the house, we have a request for four chlorine analyzer replacements. This is part of our treatment quality control, as well as regulatory required reporting to Missouri Department of Natural Resources. And this will just replace four of the units at Courtney Bend Water Treatment Plant. And also on the water side, we need to install six flow meters for a total of $45,000 in our well field. Again, part of our reporting to Missouri Department of Natural Resources. We have to annually report how much groundwater usage we have, so flow meters obviously make that much easier than having to use our SCADA control system to do that math. So the flow meters also give us more control over incoming water to the plant and let us see and regulate that more effectively, so we can control that treatment process a little better. And then finally, our last packet request is unfortunately $20,000 in postage for certified mailings for right-of-entry requests. So there is a lead and copper rule improvements, regulatory issue out there. And this picture is a picture of a letter that we sent out to residents. So basically, the rule says we have to go and verify the material that every service line in town is made of. So the hope is they're copper. We have some that are galvanized. We did finally find one that was lead, first one in the history, known history of Independence. But there is a replacement, let's say suggestion at this point, and program for that. But we potentially, again, this is potential, if we have to go and locate a service line location closer to the house than just in the right of way, which is where we've been verifying, we have to get a formal right-of-entry to be on private property, and those have to be sent out certified mail. And given the number that we have to verify, this is the worst-case scenario for that postage for $20,000. Questions on that? Yes.
Thank you. For, just so people understand, if they have been paying attention, this is a federal directive, a federal directive that you have to follow to find these lines, mostly predicated because other places have had lead problems. And so everyone has to make sure that the lines coming into the home are not lead-lined.
They do, yes. It is federal, and it's unique, and it's currently being argued. So I say that's why suggestions and program, yeah, we'll go suggestions at this point. Because what this is asking utilities, municipally-owned utilities to do is potentially work on private property, which is unprecedented. Service lines are the homeowners, and so this would, if it plays out the way it's currently designed, would have the city potentially replacing those lines rather than the homeowner. So at the very least, we're expected to identify the material at this point, and then we'll see how it continues to roll out.
And while I have your attention, can I ask you, just for people who are trying to figure out, we have a water treatment plant, so why are we paying money to the Blue Valley Sewer District? And can you explain that shared jurisdiction?
Absolutely. So we have the Courtney Bend Water Treatment Plant, and we have the Rock Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. Rock Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant only treats two watersheds in Independence, maybe two and a half, and takes in flows of only about, its design average is roughly 10 million gallons a day. In a rain event, it can take in 32 million gallons a day. So that actually serves a very small portion of the city. And the rest of the sewage in the city, by and large, goes to Little Blue Valley Sewer District. So that district is comprised of 13 different jurisdictions. Blue Springs, Lee Summit, Raymore, Grandview, lots of us are part of that. And again, it serves the vast majority land area of the city. So that's why, yes, we have our own plant, but it only serves a very small portion.
And it also serves a portion of Kansas City. Doesn't ours have both Independence and Kansas City? So these are complicated organizations.
Yes. We actually have places that we, so we have the entire inter-jurisdictional billing section of the sanitary portion of municipal services is dedicated to the inter-charges between Blue Springs, Kansas City, all those places where we provide sewer but not water, we provide water but not sewer, and they're reimbursing us for whichever one they provide and we don't, and it is very complicated, and lots of back and forth with other municipalities.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That actually is my last slide. So if you have any other questions about the budget as a whole, I'm happy to answer them.
Lisa, I'm looking at the street maintenance budget, and there's, in the, under general fund in there, there's additional $181,000 roughly in the general fund. I'm just wondering what was cut to, because I know, we know, general fund is flat relatively. And so, do you know what was cut in order to make that available?
And you're looking on the general fund side, not the street side?
I am.
Nothing?
I'm on page 169.
I know that we cut out some of the money for grinding the brush that's hauled into drop-off depot. We got a lot of that accomplished actually this fiscal year, so we won't have to spend as much next year. We pared down some of the concrete materials we were going to need and some of the guardrail material that we had planned and hoped to purchase, largely in all honesty, because we don't have the staff to accomplish the work. We are still budgeting to have full staff, but at this moment, we have 11 people in what should be a shop of 25. So tough to justify a full budget of materials when we don't think we can do all that work.
May I have just one question? Lisa, when did you say you were going to let the contracts out for the street overlay? Was that October?
For the GeoBond?
Yes.
Yes. We're going to put that list out in October for bids, for them to start as soon as the weather is clear in the spring.
To start work?
Yes.
So do we already have a list of what we're thinking?
Engineering is preparing that list right now. So I can tell you that basically, we had to draw a line in the sand, right? Because our overall pavement condition index is less than desirable at roughly a 53 to 55 throughout town. So the line in the sand to be addressed by GeoBond dollars is a PCI rating of 40. So we're looking at all the streets that are 40 and below, and looking at where we can attack from a more of a full neighborhood perspective. So once we get in, we get in, and we're done for 15, 20 years.
I like it. Can I get a sneak peek of that before you let out?
I can get that to the full council if anybody's interested in that. And we do plan, as we go along with those GeoBond projects, to be posting those to the website as well, and letting everyone know when they're starting, and provide the maps to show where we'll be.
Perfect. Thank you.
Please proceed.
I just wanted to follow up, Councilwoman McCannless, about the discrepancy that you noted earlier. Lisa's staff have already jumped into it and are looking at it. They're very on it tonight. It looks like the, part of the CIP budget in Fund 51 did not pull in there, and so that's why you've got, and I apologize because I don't remember the exact number, so there's two different totals, and then there's that one with the 23, and that's part of why. We'll get you a full explanation, but I do appreciate you calling out so that we can have accuracy, and just since we had an answer, wanted to give it to you. Also, I just wanted to mention to the council, my computer looks like it's about to die, so if you see me on my phone, it's not meant to be disrespectful, it's just to do teams that way and save battery.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Ms. Reynolds, would you just talk a little bit about replacement plans? Because I think people don't understand, sometimes we have budgets that look bigger than available funds, and how we're making our plans for that, especially to do with improvement projects.
Sure. So in a perfect world, there are funds available to, say, put a life on a vehicle, say, because they not only have miles but lots of hours on the motors, 10 years. So theoretically, then, we would try and divide the value of that truck by 10 and save a tenth of that every year, so at the end of 10 years, we just have the money ready. That is starting to work in the utility funds. It is tougher in the general fund side of the department, just because we're so resource scarce there, that we haven't really had the opportunity to put those into play. We are also doing, it's kind of more of a savings account approach, but we're looking at funding a consolidated operations center, and you'll see it in the CIP report as a spring branch complex. It would be on property that we already own and consolidate five locations into a single facility. And we've been putting money aside for that into the capital fund for several years on the sanitary and water side and the general fund side for two, as well storm. So again, just trying to bite off little pieces and save those, and so it's not such an impact. And also, again, to your point, if you're replacing it on, if we can replace it on our terms, while it's still functional, that is a much better scenario for us and saves us money than when it goes into catastrophic failure. And not only do we have to pay emergency rush fees for things, we might have a process down for longer than anticipated because is that piece of equipment available and things like that. So the replacement plans are definitely our view of the way to go. But right now, we're really only able to do those effectively on the utility side.
And when do you think the spring branch bank account will be filled up? I know we're, it feels like we're filling it with a teaspoon.
It does.
And it needs a bucket.
It does. And every time we get a new price for a vertical construction project, it makes me very sad because it just becomes, it feels like more and more of a dream and not a reality. I think we're going to have to talk about just bonding it at some point, so we can actually do that, because it will yield a cost savings to the department and the city as a whole. Our, for instance, the facilities, I mentioned it gets us out of five facilities. Two of those facilities are from the '30s and '40s. So the street maintenance and central garage facility is built in 1934 as a trolley turn station. And the forest location for construction maintenance for our water division was built in 1942, I believe. So we've done all the band-aiding we can to keep central garage together, so definitely need to figure out a solution there. But at the exponential increase in construction cost, saving $5 million to, $5 to $7 million a year just isn't going to cut it. The very first time we looked at the cost for that facility, we estimated it $12 million, and we put in the budget book 16 to be conservative, and now they're saying 40, so. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job. Well done. Thank you. Mr. City Manager brings us to, if I'm correct, Health and Animal Services.
You are correct, sir, and I will ask our director, Christina Heinan, to come give her presentation.
Thank you.
My name's Christina Heinan. I am the Health and Animal Services Director for the City of Independence, and I am happy to present our budget for fiscal year '25, '26. So our mission, like municipal services, is maybe a little wordy, but what we always say is, our interest is the health and safety of all of our residents, whether they are two-legged, four-legged, three-legged, whether they have wings, we're interested in the health and safety ultimately of our residents. Our strategic plan connection, so we are connected through having an engaged community. We work really hard to enhance our presence on social media, trying to always grow that the best we possibly can, and enhance those relationships that we have with the schools, with CSL, with the library. We are always trying to partner. We are always trying to do everything we can to make sure that those relationships are there. For an innovative economy, we work with school districts for internships. We've had interns both on our health side and our animal services side, and it is always invigorating to have them around. They're always very excited. For a safe community, we not only have someone who works on emergency preparedness, we have community service networks that we're always trying to enhance, whether it's through our mental health groups, ARCH. We are always trying to make sure that we are there, connected. We had our social service summit again this year that we were very excited about, that was well-attended. We are always trying to find ways to make sure that those community networks work better to serve our citizens. We, of course, have our ARCH program that we work with fire on. And then the last aspect is always working to sustain that no-kill animal facility down there at our shelter. And as part of a well-planned city, we are always working to bring in those grant dollars for the health department to stabilize funding and capture a, well, and discover a permanent facility solution for that shelter. That is listed on there. So this last year, you know, we have a ton of accomplishments up here. I'm very proud to say that, you know, we distributed over 400 boxes of Narcan to our citizens. Some of our numbers got a little weird here on this chart. We kept our live release rate of almost 94% down there at the shelter. We had over 5,000 animal control calls, and that was with four officers. And honestly, not the whole time did we have four officers, so our officers were staying busy out there. We had almost 1,800 health inspections out there with our food inspectors going out there and making sure that our city is safe. So for this next year, our org chart does look a little different, and I'm going to touch on this. We have the shelter side, and then on the health side, we have environmental services, which is our food inspectors, and health services, which are those epidemiologists, the nurses, and the public health specialists. So on here, you'll also see that there is a difference for FTEs, for our staffing going forward, and the biggest issue, or biggest change you'll see here is for that property tax levy, which is Recreation Health Fund. And this is, well, I'll just go ahead and say, because animal control is moving over to PD, so you're going to see later in PD's presentation. so you're going to see later in PD's presentation, um, like other jurisdictions in the area, PEDs normally have animal control, so animal control and those officers are moving over to the police department. We are working out all the details about making that go as smoothly as we can on July first, uh, but that is a big move. And so those people and those funds with those people, so their vehicles, um, the fuel, not just their salaries, but their equipment, their training, um, and any permits that they need for some of those things are all, those funds are getting shifted over. And then, as we have discussed many times, um, grants remain volatile at the state and federal level, and I know I am understating that when I say that. So, like municipal services, you'll see that our adopted budget was three point three, uh, estimated expenditures are three point seven. The majority of that is, uh, grant spending on those budgets. It's money coming in, some additional grant dollars that we were not anticipating to come in, that did come in. We hope that happens again this next year, and then you'll see with the proposed, it's actually lower. And that is primarily, it's because of the move of those animal control officers over. So, as I said, um, our revenues, for the most part, remain flat when it comes to Recreation Health Fund, when it comes to P P dollars, those dollars are just not climbing at the same rate that, uh, health insurance costs are, that our staffing costs are. There's a lot of things that are going up a lot faster. We continue to apply for and receive grants, whether it's on the shelter side or on the health side. We're part of spay and neuter coalitions, so we can get reimbursed to help our community. We're continuing to work on making sure that we're billing for health insurance where we can, uh, whether it's Medicare, Medicaid, vaccines for adults, vaccines for children. We're doing everything we can on that side to make sure that we're getting reimbursed and we can capture those dollars. Um, and we're continuing to look for new revenue sources, um, whether it's vital records that we were able to roll out and has actually quite picked up speed now, um, or billing for our licensed clinical social workers while they're out there. That is something that we are actively working with FIRE to make sure that we're able to do. One of our approved budget packages, this is actually going to be some of the funds that are switched over to PD. Our incinerator, um, was failing. It is used not only for cremating of remains, whether, um, someone's, you know, pet passes away, they're able to bring it to us, and we're able to cremate. PD and, um, other local law enforcement agencies are able to also use us for, uh, disposal of evidence that's no longer needed, um, to make sure it's done in a safe way. However, due to age and sometimes the extreme temp that some of those items burn at, the incinerator has started to fail, so it needed to be replaced. And that is my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Please proceed.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
You said primarily paid for by grants. Can you give me a percentage of what your budget is for grants?
So, I don't know if I can give you a percentage right off the top of my head. I can tell you that, um, all, everyone that you see under Health Services on that side, um, they are all grant-funded individuals. So, our public health manager, our epidemiologist, public health nurse, uh, public health specialists, um, emergency preparedness planner, they are all grant-funded individuals.
I'm gonna make this request to the City Manager. For some of these, y- y- your department is such an unusual mishmash that it is hard for us to kind of be like, okay, so how much of this is health and how much is animal services? In the future, for the FTEs, can we get a breakdown of that? Because that will just make so much more sense for how many of everybody you have. And if we don't have that...
Well, and I think when we were discussing before, one of these numbers is off, and we were working on getting it corrected. Um, the Health Services Grant, it lists thirty-five under the current year. We do not have thirty-five staff up there. But you'll see that, I believe that number of eleven is correct. But yes, we will work on make sure getting you that updated number that is correct with their amounts.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I just want to answer Councilmember McCandless's last question. Very quick math for the current fiscal year, looks like about thirty-two percent of Ms. Heinen's department is supported by grant funds.
Okay. So, my next question is, you know, Eastern Jackson County, every city except Independence is covered by county funds, right? So, the Jackson County Health Department covers all municipalities except Independence. Are there partnerships we can make? Are there shared services we can provide? Because I'm already paying my county taxes, and I want to be sure we're taking advantage of that. So, I just, as we are looking at what I think are gonna be drastic cuts in grants, are we preparing to supply those services to our residents by finding ways to partner with Jackson County Health Department?
So, I can say that Jackson County is in a similar boat that we are. They have, although, yes, they have those county funds that are coming in, when it comes to those state-passed through dollars, which are part of those grants, um, they are seeing that same issue. And the, when, we experienced this back in twenty-eighteen, um, when our health department transitioned and they picked it up, because of the way the formula goes, they actually received less money for Independence than they would when it's divided up because of the way the calculation is. So, they actually had fewer fund dollars for Eastern Jackson County as a whole when they were in charge of Independence also. Um, we still continue to work with them. They sit on many of our different, um, coalitions we have. We invite them to everything, and they invite us to everything that they can. We also work with, I mean, the Social Service Summit, whether it is, um, that, whether it's, you know, reaching out. There are limited dollars when it comes to the state dollars. We are directed to use those dollars for Independence residents only. So, we have those limitations, but we do everything we can to make sure that we are not reinventing the wheel every single time that we go forward with something.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Um, we recently had a spay-neuter event. Yes. The first week of May. Can you talk about the success of that?
So, I always worry, it's, it was a success. We had a ton of animal, well, not a ton. We had, um, we had quite a few animals that we were able to spay and neuter and ensure that they are not creating unwanted litters. Um, it is always a little heart-wrenching for me because we have, we fill up those slots so quickly. The need is so huge in our community. And then it's also frustrating because then we always at least have five or six people who don't show up. And, you know, tho- those spots don't get done. We had, I think, forty slots, and we did, um, over twenty animals were spayed and neutered. Um, there was one or two that actually were already spayed and neutered, and it was kind of a surprise. But we are always thrilled to be able to help with that. We are thrilled. We have Operation Litter List dollars. This is not our first time doing the spay-neuter coalition. We want to be able to do this, and we want to keep going out there. We love our community, and every day, we have somebody who comes forward who has a litter that they were not expecting. And we get that, um, and we want to help, and we know that it is not always easy for them to ask for help, nor is it necessarily within, you know, their budget to, to go and get that done. And so we want to make sure it's taken care of, because we are over capacity at the shelter again, and we stay there, it seems like, all the time right now. And so we desperately want to help.
Do we have a, do we have a goal for how many of, I mean, are we gonna be able to do that again soon? I know that's a partnership.
It is a partnership. So, the goal for the partnership, the coalition, is, uh, that it will be done four times a year, once a quarter. Um, we are in a little bit of a quandary right now because we are without a vet. If there's someone who's watching, who knows someone who just graduated from vet school, we would love to talk to them. We are looking for a vet to be able to participate. If we're not able to find a vet, we can work with the coalition to see if we can get a relief vet to come in. We are going to do everything we can to continue participating in it. Uh, we're still, they, the group knows of our issues, and we are going to continue working to do what we can.
Okay. Um, has, from your perspective, has the animal crisis gotten better, worse? I know it's been a really rough three years, I'd say.
So, in the last three years, it's gotten worse. We had a very successful adoption event at the beginning of the month. Um, we were very happy, um, that we got our number of dogs in our shelter below a hundred for the first time in months. I was thrilled. Um, and then it took less than a week to be back over capacity again. We constantly have people, um, that need help, and we are trying our best to find a way to do that while still caring for the animals in our care.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please proceed.
I'm looking at page one hundred and nine, it's the animal shelter use tax page. And my question really is on professional services. So, last year, we budgeted a hundred and seven thousand. We used forty thousand, but we have zero budget going forward. I just wondering what that, what is that, and...
So, I think that was, um, just some of those dollars that got moved over, um, to forty-seven oh five, and we need to get them moved back. Because the hundred and six, uh, hundred and six, hundred and seven thousand, that's the amount of our cleaning crew. And so I think that budget was just moved, and in, in the next version, you're going to see, it's going to be back there.
Okay. Right.
Mr. Mayor, please proceed. Thank you. So officially, we still don't, do not have a contract with Jackson County, correct? We're just kind of going by the seat of our pants as much as we can. That a good assessment?
It's a fair assessment.
So, with the incinerator, is that, would that be the responsibility of us, or that would be responsibility of, of the county to...
So, it has been our incinerator this entire time.
Okay.
Um, it's on, it's located on Vista at the old K-nine facility.
Okay.
So, it does kind of make sense that those funds are being transferred back to PD. It's on the property that they maintain right now, and their officers will be the ones that operate it. Uh, our officers have operated it. Sometimes, when Great Plains operated the shelter, they operated the incinerator on behalf of the county.
Okay. Well, that, that helps. Thank you. With the number, I could think of slide number two, that had the, the five thousand number of animals that, yeah, the...
Five thousand one hundred and fifty-two animal control calls.
Does that include the calls that we do for service with, um, Jackson County too as part of that agreement?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
So, I will say that of all the animals that end up coming into the shelter, only about ten percent of the animals that come in, we're sure are counting animals. Probably this, roughly the same number of animal control calls. However, of course, those Jackson, uh, those county calls take so much longer often, because we are sometimes traveling forty-five minutes to an hour to get to the call. And if it ends up being an issue, it might be two officers who need to be down there. And then their response time back is, is just unreal sometimes.
Sure. Well, that adds up quickly with just not wear and tear, but fuel and, and time and, and the like.
And often, if it's a serious case, a deputy needs to be there also because they have the ability to write the tickets. We don't write the tickets for the county cases. Um, we just serve as a witness for them. And so, um, it, it often gets complicated while we wait for someone who's willing to write a ticket, who's out there, who has that knowledge.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
And just to be cl- clear, so you think about roughly five hundred of those fifty-one hundred are, are count, on the county side?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else have other further questions? Anyone else have other further questions? So, I just have one question. Uh, the City Manager pointed out to me that Bongo was in fact adopted.
Bongo was adopted.
Yes, and so, uh, just very quickly, fifteen, twenty seconds, so we can talk later afterwards. Just tell me about Doc, Bongo getting adopted, because that's a big deal, because he was there the longest.
So, Bongo was at our shelter for over a year. He'd come in April of last year. He was adopted last week. We, we were actually shocked. We had actually somebody come in, um, and of course, it was a day I wasn't there, so I was extremely sad to have missed it. And then we actually had somebody show up the next day asking to adopt Bongo, and I was like, where have you guys all been?
Where have they been?
I'm actually, I've been waiting to reach out to his adopters, because I told them I would give them a week, um, before I started pestering them for photos, and, um, so tomorrow is one week. So, tomorrow, I'm gonna start pestering them for photos, so this is their public notice. But yeah, we are just thrilled that, um, Bongo, who waited so long, has a place to be, um, a home. He, yeah. All our dogs deserve it. Um, we are thankful that he held on that long, because there were quite a few times when we were not sure he was gonna make it due to shelter stress. And so we're happy that he got out, and his tail, um, will whack someone, I'm sure, quite hard in the legs. But that's okay.
I just want to say thank you for the work you did, because I know you guys did a lot of work to help him with the stress and all of that. So, thank you for that. So, very, very good. Anyone else have other questions before we wrap up? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, Mr. City Manager, now we're gonna get technical, so tech services. Anything you want to say to get us started here?
Uh, no, sir. I'll go ahead and ask our director, Jason Newkirk, to come give his budget overview.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. It's always hard to follow up, uh, kitty cats and puppies, but I'll, I'll do my best and try not to bore you with a bunch of technical stuff. Jason Newkirk, Technology Services Director. And, uh, first, go over our mission here. Um, so it is our mission to provide IT solutions within a secure and reliable environment, and to support city departments in delivering quality services to the community. So, short version is, it's our job to help make everybody a little bit better, a little bit more efficient. Going into our strategic plan connection, so while we are a, an internal service department, we do have a couple of areas where we reach out directly to the public. Uh, first, we, uh, help, uh, the communications team administer the public website. We provide public web maps, um, and data to, to users via our public website. And we provide online portals to help people conduct business with the city. And kind of piggybacking on that, that kind of goes into business growth as well. A lot of those online portals are related to licenses and permits and things like that, and I'll go into that a little bit, uh, later on in the presentation. But one big focus for us over the last few years has been financial sustainability and just controlling those long-term costs. So, um, what we've been working to do is identify areas where we have similar work functions within the city and make sure that we have, we're not deploying separate software solutions for each of those functions, that we're really consolidating all of that into, um, yeah, a smaller set of enterprise applications. You get a couple of benefits from that, um, not just, you know, the fact that we're saving licensing costs, but also it allows, uh, different departments to work together a little bit better, share data, things like that. High-performance organization, so that's really kind of our, our bread and butter, where we get to go and, and get to know the, the individual departments and their, their business processes, and then get to build a technology solution around that. And also, kind of going back to consolidation and things like that, one of the things we like to do is, is identify those, the similar processes. You know, we have a lot of different groups that conduct inspections, for example. So, once we build a really good, uh, inspection process in City Works, you know, we can kind of take that and lift it and deploy it in a bunch of different groups. All right, so diving into accomplishments, first, I want to hit on our security accomplishments. Uh, so we have, uh, this past year, we developed and enforced a new password policy and password manager. Uh, the goal of this was to really raise our standard up to meet or exceed the, uh, compliance requirements from various outside agencies like Department of Homeland Security and the FBI. the FBI. We've also deployed an additional email security tool. So not only did this save some money because we were able to use one of our existing enterprise applications to replace a separate solution, but it does a better job of identifying what's actually malicious content that's coming in. And it also brings in the end user into that process. So if something does get miscategorized, they're able to see what got quarantined and request that a manual review be done by our security team. And then lastly, we deployed an XDR solution. So what that means, we like our acronyms in IT, right? But basically what that means is it's, it's a tool that pulls in all of the, the security data related to an individual event, puts it all in one place so that our security team doesn't have to hop around anytime we have an investigation going on. They're able to look in one location and then determine proper actions that they need to take. Next, we're looking at application deployment. So kind of piggybacking on that idea of trying to have a smaller set of enterprise applications, whenever we have that, we're able to accelerate our upgrade lifecycle, which gives our end users access to the latest version and the latest tools more quickly, right? So this year, we were able to upgrade our GIS and City Works systems. We did deploy a new public portal for licenses and permits. This, this particular item here is a little, a little bit in progress. So we currently have a lot of licenses and permits that are, are on our website and we're working on migrating all of them into this single portal application. Kind of the goal here is to give our businesses and anyone that does, works in the city, kind of a one-stop shop, they'll be able to log in, see all their employee permits, contractor licenses, business licenses and things like that, and just, just do everything all from one location. Next, we also deployed a utility billing cashier system, a new Wi-Fi solution, agenda management solution, and an e-fax deployment. So we got a few in-progress accomplishments here. First, we are deploying a new remote access solution to replace our traditional VPN solution. This is, not only is it going to be better for end users because it's going to automatically detect when you're off-network and connect back to the city's network and give you access to needed IT resources, but it's also going to give us, from a security standpoint, a little bit more control over devices when they're not here on the network. We're going to have a little bit better visibility into what's going on and a little more control over them. We're also deploying a device management and remote assistance tool. We actually rolled this out just a couple of weeks ago. Still, still, some aspects of it that we were working on, but the major deployment is done. And what this is, is it's going to save our technicians time from having to drive around town to punch in administrator passwords just to install software or make configuration changes. We're going to be able to do that more remotely. So it's going to basically decrease that turnaround time on getting things resolved. Also in the process of deploying utility online portal and kiosk this year. Org chart is exactly the same as it was last year, so no changes there. We are adding one FTE this year. That's going to be a system administrator for our financial system. So the, the main goal of that person is, is going to be twofold. They're going to be providing kind of that day-to-day administration of that system, but they're also going to be working with key people to identify integrations that need to happen with that system because that's really a hub for a lot of things. We, we know that our utility billing system, our, our City Works system and others need to integrate with that. Sorry. There we go. Significant budget changes this year. So as you probably have, have heard, the, due to various situations in the world, like IT costs have went way up. Fortunately, we've done a pretty good job of consolidating a lot of things and we've really controlled our licensing costs quite a bit. The main increase that you're going to see this year is really related to one thing. So five years ago, we purchased what is now our data center. And with that purchase came five years of hardware maintenance, software maintenance, and then all of the licensing that goes with that. So we've reached the end of those five years. So this is the very first time that we are paying that out of our annual budget. And that really encompasses almost the entire increase that you're going to see here on the next slide. And that's reflected on that internal services line there. For the most part, the rest of it stayed fairly, fairly flat. We did ask, we do have three approved budget packages this year. First is that system administrator that I always already discussed. The second is a call filtering cloud solution. So we've seen a pretty serious uptick in not only the number of spam calls that our employees are receiving, but also malicious phone calls. So that, that really, phone-based attacks is really a new vector for the cybersecurity front. So what this software is going to do is it's going to identify both the spammy sort of calls, but also those malicious calls and just make sure that they never get to our end users. And then we're also adding some additional funds for training just so that we can make sure that our staff's staying up to date on the latest technologies. And that is about it, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of, I don't know, questions, comments?
Yeah.
I, I really deeply appreciate your customer service focus about making integrated approaches for our business folks who want to start businesses in independence. You never want them to have to look in 10 places to find 10 different things as opposed to thinking through, if you're going to need this, you're probably going to need that.
Right.
If you need that, you probably are going to need this.
Yep.
One of the things that we're hoping with our new location over by the Hartman Center is that we'll be able to have businesses come into one place and meet with water and electric and comm dev so that those things make sense together. So thank you for being part of that team.
Absolutely.
And then the other is that I've been through many, many budgets. I've been through great budgets and through very lean budgets. And the first thing that gets massacred in every lean budget is training. And it is the thing that costs you for years and years and years.
Yes.
So I appreciate that you are putting some additional money into training because that prevents really expensive mistakes.
Yeah.
So thank you very much.
Please proceed.
I just want to do a shout-out and a, and a big thank you and kudos. I use your GIS quite a bit. Your GIS team produces maps and different stuff that we can visualize and take into the community. So a big thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
It goes a long way.
They're, they're, they're very talented and do, do a very good job. So glad to hear it.
Very good. Thank you. Please proceed.
Back to the full-time equivalent positions, the FTEs. So I just, because you had a different number, I think, then. So for 2425, you had 23. And then this year, my book says 16?
Councilmember, that's a discrepancy on my part. I apologize.
Okay, sorry.
So the, the number in 2425 was totaling up the people that Jason has in his primary tech services org. And then he has another org which housed his GIS folks. And so it totaled it there. And then I just wasn't consistent and it split out. So it's 1650 is what he has in his tech services org. And then the other eight is in his enterprise resource planning and GIS org. And then that's going to be your 2450, I believe, when those are added together. So that's, that's my fault, not Jason's.
And then there's one additional though. So now it's 24? Was that what that slide said?
Yes, because that, that is going to be the budget package for the system administrator.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Well done. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. That brings us to human resources. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. We will welcome Director Mike Jackson to give his departmental budget overview.
Okay. Thank you.
Evening. Mayor, Council, my name is Mike Jackson. I'm the Human Resources Director. I will be going over, there it is, be going over our proposed budget for fiscal year 2526. Like my colleagues, we also have an extremely long mission statement here. But in short, we, we take care of, of city employees that take care of the citizens. We want to make sure that everyone is getting trained, being taken care of. So a few of our accomplishments from this current fiscal year is we have transitioned our recruiting functions from city hire into Dayforce. I'm sure you realize that Dayforce is our payroll software. It also has other modules, one being the recruiting function. So we, we transitioned that back in October, I believe. It was a pretty seamless transition. It's worked out really well on the front end and the back end, back end for people applying for jobs. It's a lot easier. And for managers, the hiring managers on the back end, it's easier to sift through the resumes and coordinate with, with HR. We've also attempted to standardize a lot of the disciplinary action processes and procedures as well as the, the related documents across all the departments to make sure that we're consistent on how we handle that, with one exception being IPD. As you know, Police Department has their own Internal Affairs Division. There's a litany of, of legal requirements and state statutes and the like that they have to deal with. But we do work closely with them as well, but they handle most of their own business in-house. We successfully updated the IBW, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IPL-specific collective bargaining agreement last fall. The council ratified that, I believe, in November. We started a, a new initiative called the Active Lifestyle Program, the ALP, that utilizes the Cigna wellness funds to reimburse our employees. So every employee essentially gets $100 to use how they want to, want to, if it's related to, as long as it's related to something fitness-related, like active lifestyle. So if you want to, to get a gym membership, we will reimburse up to $100. If you want to register for a 5K, we'll reimburse that. If there's four or five Ks that are $25 each, we'll do all four. We also initiated the, the new federal CDL compliance process for, for our CDL drivers. As you know, we have many CDL drivers within the city, commercial drivers, license holders, over 200 as, as a matter of fact. There are some very specific requirements as it pertains to drug testing and the random drug testing and how, the frequency of that drug testing. So beginning July, we are going to make sure we're following those guidelines really strictly. We have a consultant from down in Springfield assisting us with that. We're also going to be doing those testing, or the testing onsite rather than bringing them to a facility, loss of time for work. We're actually coming out to the site and doing the random tests there. So it'll save a lot of time for, for the employees. And, and again, two more collective bargaining agreements, the International Association of Firefighters and the United Steelworkers. We started negotiating both of those in the last couple of months. We fully expect to have the USW one completed by the end of June and, which it would expire June 30th. The IAFF agreement expires December 31st, so we do have some time for that. But we, we would fully expect to get that one done too here in the next couple of months. So here's an overview of our org. Four, four functions, really. Recruiting and onboarding is a big one and it's really the one that all of us in Human Resources touches at some point. So we are very much a cross-pollinating group. We're small, so we, we help each other out. But recruitment and onboarding from, you know, from posting the position all the way down to hiring and getting them into the payroll system, it all works together seamlessly. We also do employee relations, performance management, and compensation and benefits was a, is a huge one, obviously. And that's where payroll is housed. So currently for 2425, we have 10 FTEs and we're really hoping to keep our 10 FTEs. So we are proposing 10 full-time employees for 2526. I got a little messed up there, but. So we have, so some of the significant budget changes. We've worked with the budget manager to identify some cost-saving measures for the current fiscal, see if they can be applied to the next fiscal. You'll notice on the next slide, under our operating expenditures, it's increased significantly, but that's due to moving the Dayforce expenses from tech services into human resources. So it's just kind of moving from one department to another. So the, the cost hasn't increased, it's just in our budget now. And we've also added in about 10,000, well, not about, $10,000 for supervisory and manager training for staff. This is something Human Resources used to do years ago. And as a, as a new supervisor, couple of decades ago, I found it super invaluable, the things I learned from those trainings. So talking with staff, talking with city manager's office, they really want us to bring that back. So we look to be August or September is when the first session will be. We'll probably do quarterly or every other month to start off with. They're about two to two-and-a-half hour training sessions and we're going to be doing them at Graceland University down the street because they have a very large auditorium so we can do everybody at once. Uh-oh. Okay. Well, all right. So our total budget for, for FY 2526 is just a little over 2 million, 2.072. As you can see, that is a big increase from the current budget, but again, that goes back to the Dayforce moving those expenses over. So with that, any questions?
Mayor, before questions, just for the public's benefit, I'm not sure why some of these slides didn't display appropriately, but they are displaying normal on the agenda item online. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was also going to mention that because on mine, if you can see.
Yours is fine, too?
It's perfect.
Hmm.
So, because I've been following along with it and I have no idea why that happened, but I think that's important to point out to people that are on. If you go online and download the agenda and the full PDF agenda, you will in fact get a clean version of it, so.
It's probably operator error on my part. Wrong buttons.
Any questions? No worries. Yes. Please proceed.
Well, first of all, I'm glad to hear you're re-implementing the supervisor-manager training. I think that's really important to, to train those folks, especially when they haven't done that before. It's, it's a critical piece of the puzzle. I just had one question relative to Dayforce. You know, we approved a num, a year or so ago, all, you know, a number of new modules for that. Have they all been implemented at this point or there's still more to go?
There's still quite a few left to go. It, it all comes down to manpower. And we really want to make sure, not sure if you remember the, the original rollout with Dayforce had a lot of kinks, things that they were working through. We don't, we don't want to roll it out so fast again. So we're really working through these extra modules. For example, the recruitment module, we worked on that for a number of months and it's a small module really before we pushed it out to the rest of the city. We just, we, we don't want to have that fiasco again. But we, we fully intend to, to roll out future modules, I mean, other modules in the coming months.
So what are some of those coming?
There's some specifically to the disciplinary world too, that it keeps, takes care of all the files. You don't have to do any kind of paper files and it tracks the individual. Some of the other ones are escaping me right now off the top of my head, but that's the big one we were probably going to be looking at next after. Oh, another one would be a, there's a way to get paid before your pay period. You can download an app. And so let's say I work a full shift today, at the end of my shift, that money is available that I can actually just click a few buttons and have it automatically downloaded into my account or sent into my account. That's not too complicated of a one, of an actual, of a, of a module, but it's, it's a little scary because people aren't used to that. So we really want to make sure we get the messaging right and push that out and make sure everybody's very comfortable with utilizing it before we just kind of throw it out there and say, oh yeah, you can do this. Make sure everyone understands that if you do that, you're not going to get your, your normal paycheck on the normal, the normal day either. So that's one we're looking to do here in probably the first half of, one of the first two quarters of the new fiscal.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have other further questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Mr. City Manager, I'm going to ask you for your adv- Mr. City Manager, I'm going to ask you for your advice on this one. I'm thinking if we just take a five-minute break, because I know the Police Department might be a pretty extensive presentation, or what's your recommendation on that, Mr. City Manager?
We'd be happy to take a quick recess, if that would be comfortable for everyone, sir.
Okay, let's just do, just five minutes, get ready, but a chance for a break, and then we'll come back. We'll come with the Police Department. If you've got a budget book, that's at 218, and then Finance and Law is on 142 and 152. So those will be the two presentations we have for this evening. We'll take five minutes, and it's 113, so we'll come back at 118, 119. All right, we are ready to go, and Mr. City Manager, we'd like to cue this one up.
Yes, sir. We will go ahead and have our police presentation from Deputy Chief Jason Peterson.
Deputy Chief, please proceed.
Oh, fine. Thought I was doing okay. We all have mission statements, and ours is to protect the life, individual liberty, and property of all people within the City of Independence. It carries on from there, but really, our purpose is to promote public safety by education, curbing crime, and disorder. We participate in the strategic plan, Connection: A Well-Planned City, with the recent development of the Independence Justice Center and that plan. We're also supporting the financially stable organization by exploring new and innovative ways for fiscal stewardship, and establishing that engagement in the community with... Recently, we've established the substation on the historic Independence Square, the ribbon cutting for that's coming up next week. And again, we're always looking for new and creative ways to combat crime and increase the perception of safety. We're a safe, welcoming community, and we've secured grant funding to expand the ALPR Plan, the Automated License Plate Readers, that help us to establish evidence and some correlation between directions that vehicles travel and things like that, or timing, and analytics that help us in solving crimes. So some accomplishments that we've had this year, we've fully deployed the BodyWorn Camera platform with all of our uniformed officers are issued a BodyWorn Camera that they wear and activate in almost all of their interactions with the public. So that gives us an opportunity to really expand that transparency and review process, and it really helps to tell the story. When we have questions about what's going on, we can just produce that video and show, you know, how that, it looked from the officer's vantage point, and really shows and records that entire interaction. It also gives us an opportunity for community engagement, so people can see how quickly things happen, and your perception changes somewhat when you're seeing it within that real time, in which the officer experienced it versus the way people discuss it later and then break it down frame by frame, and try to say, "Well, this could have happened," or "You could have done this, or should have done this." The perspective is completely different when you're running through it in real time. The Department updated our in-car video system to the same platform used by the BodyWorn Camera system, so they are integrated seamlessly. You have a trigger when you activate your license and your siren. It also brings on the body cam, so you have less chance for error in missing that activation. Then there's also a trigger that is tied to the tracer, the TASER, sorry, that will also activate the body camera, and that's another thing that we've recently accomplished, was a department-wide deployment of the new TASER 10 system. We've also began deploying the Panasonic Tuckbook tablets to replace our aging MDTs in the vehicles that were no longer suitable for updates. They were of such age that the Windows updates that get pushed were overwhelming for the system. They just couldn't support it. We are continuing to move forward with that Panasonic update. As we know, Windows 11 is coming, and we have to make sure that everything is ready for updates to that. The systems that we had previously wouldn't accept it at all. They couldn't even take the recent Windows updates. We also are working towards establishing a five-year replacement plan on those MDTs. They have a five-year warranty, so if we can purchase part of that fleet every year, it's much more sustainable than trying to dump a huge amount of resources into replacing the entire fleet at one time. That's very difficult to come by. Our org chart is slightly more complicated than a lot of the other departments, and we have a lot of things that fall under there. So we have two deputy chiefs, the Operations Support and the Field Operations Bureau. Field Operations is the stuff that they make the movies and the television shows about, you know, going out there handling calls for service, dealing with the exciting things, and really, that is boots-on-the-ground, contacting people, trying to make that difference day-to-day. And the operational support side is everything that supports those boots-on-the-ground, everything from budget, fiscal, fleet, technology. They don't make movies and TV shows about that, but it's still pretty exciting. If you look at our personnel, our FTEs are the same as what we were looking at last year. There is minor change in the grant fund, and that's simply because some grants have shifted off of what they're paying for personnel, and then we're picking that up on our side. Okay, so budget changes in fiscal year 2526. PD has been moved out of the General Fund, and the entirety of our budget is now housed in Fund 67. It's identified as the Prop PD Sales Tax Fund. Police is receiving a transfer out from the General Fund, equivalent to the 42.5% of General Fund revenue that was protected by ordinance in the... It was the amendment to Proposition P, so question two, which is several years ago now, but as we expanded the use tax and what was allowable, that went before the voters, it was approved, that identified that there had to be the same percentage of the General Fund protected at that point in time where that passed, and that's that 42.5%. To balance the police budget in this framework, or following adjustments were made, vacancy savings factor was increased by 1.9 million, and approximately 200,000 of miscellaneous operating costs were reduced. It's always tough to reduce operating costs, but we'll accept that challenge and move forward surgically, making very deliberate decisions with what's going to have the biggest return on investment for us and the public. Personnel costs and contractual expenditures continue to be our large-cost drivers, as they are in most organizations. Animal services, as Director Heinon already spoke about, are the animal control officers, so the enforcement side of that. Will be moving to the Police Department in fiscal year 2526. That is a relatively new development, so we still have some nuance to figure out and logistics to identify and iron out. We'll work through that in short order. Additionally, our planned equipment expenditures in Fund 16, which is the Public Safety Sales Tax, were reduced to balance that fund's budget. This includes reductions to vehicle replacements, radio replacements, and Star Chase system purchases. That doesn't mean we're not purchasing vehicles. It doesn't mean we're going to be running short with vehicles. What we've done historically was focus on our frontline enforcement vehicles, and this year, we already had a plan to focus more on some of our administrative and special-use vehicles. Some of them may be used for covert purposes, and you're not outfitting that like you would a police vehicle, so it's about half the price. Personnel costs, again, and contractual expenditures continue to be large-cost drivers in our budget as a whole. When you look at our proposed budget, it's here, it's roughly the same as what it was last year overall. You have about a $230,000 difference, but it's really roughly about the same. And again, this incorporates bringing animal control, the enforcement side over, and the funding that they have from the health tax levy. Here are our projected revenues. You've heard revenues flat. Revenue's flat. It still is. There's really minor changes to this. The big questions that we have right now are combat. We still don't have the contract on combat funds yet, but we expect that that will come through the same as it has, and the numbers identified there at 225. The only other changes that we really have are, there's an increase in the school district revenue, because they've requested two additional SROs. So as long as we can fulfill those obligations and provide them with the additional two SROs that they've requested, that's the expected revenue there. Any questions on revenue?
Anyone have any questions? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, just for clarity for people who are listening, when the school district requests some of our staff, they are responsible for the entire cost of that police officer, retirement, medical, and salary. Is that a fair assessment?
They cover salary and benefits at a percentage. In the summertime, those officers come out of the school when school is not in session, with the exception of those who are handling the summer school duties. So when they come out of school for that summer session when they're out, they'll work the road. So they'll come out and work patrol, handle patrol calls, or there's some training that they'll be attending or conducting. We use them in another fashion in the Police Department, where they're not specifically serving the school at that time.
And then, one nerdy accounting question, which I will not make you answer. So I know that we have put the additional General Fund into, what is it, Fund 16?
67.
67, okay. However, I just want to make clear to people who are listening, while that is an allocation from the General Fund, those specific sales taxes will still be treated with their own accounting purposes, so that they can only be spent in the way that they are. We're still following all the GASB rules about how those things are accounted for, just making sure.
Yes, Councilmember, that is correct. And the way that we can see it, just for a little additional context within our enterprise system, that fund has a distinct org, and so we can see the revenue specifically that comes into that fund. When the police charge an expense that is meant to go to that sales tax fund, it'll be charged there, so it doesn't really intermingle. The same concept stands for fire, so yes, we are, they are combined in the sense that the General Fund amount is transferring in there, which makes it easier to look at their budget all in one piece, but those pieces, we are able to account for distinctly.
Fantastic, and we have wisely connected with Ruben Brown, I hope, to make sure that when they come and audit us, they're going to be happy with how we follow those rules, since this is a big budgetary change for us.
I believe my finance director would say, yes, we are confident that when our auditors come and have this conversation. Also, I would just add too, for anybody who's curious in the public, this is, we are not the first city to do this. There are other cities even here within Missouri that have done something similar to help balance our budget, and also to help make the accounting and transparency around the police budget much clearer.
Thank you. And then my last question is for the City Manager. I know that, having listened to budget presentations for several years, we knew that we were in for a rough couple of years, because our payments into the retiree payment system were, loggers, was increasing by state mandate. We had to put more money in. And is that part of what I was seeing, the increase in the payment for police retiree expenses, or that was just contractual?
The... The city...
Can you go back a slide? Yeah.
Okay, the retiree information you're seeing there is related to the health insurance benefit?
Oh, I should read the whole...
That's quite all right.
Okay. Am I correct in remembering that we were having increasing costs for three or four years for catch-up on the logger side? years for catch-up on the logger side?
Yes, you are correct about that.
And when does that kind of come back down to earth?
Because of the strong management of administration and council, we've been able to curtail the growth. What we're seeing now is prior fiscal years, the expenses that were relative to somebody's logger's benefit. We're currently forecasting that within the next three to four years, we should see a decrease in the contribution rate for that, for that particular fund.
So we're bending that curve. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please proceed.
A few questions. So the 331.63 people, does that include the animal control folks that have moved over? Or, I mean, it's the same number as last year, so I'm just trying to understand if that includes, or how, what happened there?
Councilmember, it does not at this point, but once the decision is final, it would.
Okay, I see. I see what you're saying. Okay, all right. There's a couple places it references core. What is core?
Core is, it's, it's essentially a response. It's a community-oriented, community-oriented response plan, essentially. It's a, it's handled at the patrol level. One of the patrol captains heads it up and they identify areas where you have a specific problem. And what they'll do is take officers who volunteer to participate in that, that want to do something in addition to their normal duties, and they have a, it's about every two weeks meeting where they identify what the next core initiative is going to be and they identify how they're going to approach it and then start to really tailor that response for what that issue is right there. So you can leverage the other units in the agency for intelligence or if you need, you know, some sort of surveillance or a SWAT approach where you need to just put a couple more vehicles in the area for more of a quick response if you're working on a specific problem. So you have a business where we have a lot of calls for service and trying to identify what the origin of those calls for service are, if there is something that we can do in an enforcement effort to curtail those calls for service and either arrest the problem or figure out how to prevent it and take care of that as it sits. After that core initiative period is over, they'll come back and evaluate it. And the, the effort that goes there is really more than just the reactive respond to calls for service. It is much more of a tailored approach for an identified issue. And because it's not a full-scale unit that it's assigned to one thing all the time, they're able to cycle people in and out, which maintains a level of freshness and individual initiative with the way that they approach it. And it also gives folks that may not be in a specialized unit an opportunity to do something in addition to those just regular calls for service that they respond to on a daily basis or the self-initiated activity that they would be involved in.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. I'm looking at my notes here. There was something else here. Oh, so there's a, there's a section called tactical operations and then there's a section called special enforcement. I'm confused is the difference of those two. I read them, but I still don't completely understand it. Can you kind of just help me with that?
Yes, tactical operations would be SWAT, K-9, EOD, things like that. So think about the tactics side of it. Special enforcement of the special operations division is going to be your crash investigation and your motorcycle unit.
Okay, okay. Well, I noticed those were included, but I just thought there was maybe more to it than that.
We used to just call that traffic.
Okay.
But it's been shifted over to special enforcement. That happened actually quite a while ago.
Gotcha, okay. Let's see. I was looking at the records unit and the, in particular, the salaries. And salaries are 150,000 roughly less, but the people stayed the same. And so I was just trying to figure that out.
Well, we do have some vacancies. We have a supervisor vacancy in the records unit that we found it very challenging to fill. We don't have any internal applicants that were interested in it, whether it was the hours or the job itself. That's something that just hasn't been very desirable. And we've also had some folks who have left and some brand-new folks that have come in. Obviously, they're coming in at a lower sound.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
Councilmember, if I could also just pay you back really quickly, apologies. And so to D.C. Peterson's point, this is part of what you're seeing here reflected as a vacancy savings, so from that supervisor that they've had difficulty filling. We will leave flexibility in this budget year and we will work very closely with PD to monitor their personnel situation. And so if there's an opportunity to fill that and we can offset savings somewhere else, we'll do that. But that's, that's what you're seeing is us taking into account those personnel items that he just listed and then reducing the overall budget and holding that money in vacancy savings.
Okay, all right, thank you. I think that's all my questions. Appreciate it.
Anyone else have further questions? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. This may be more of a question for the city manager. FIFA, it's in, it's in our budget book, thinking ahead, what that's going to look like. This time next year, we'll be smack dab in on the front door of that. How are we trying to project overtime funding, personnel funding, I guess on a more holistic look? We're talking about the police department now. Any thoughts or discussions on what that may look like moving forward in the next 12 months?
Yes, sir. This was part of our recent legislative visit to Washington, DC. We've calculated the number of personnel that we think we would need to have, additional personnel that we would need to have on duty throughout those six-week period, and then calculated the fiscal impact of that. And that's been part of the federal request that's been made for additional funding to our community.
Do you think there'll be any feedback within the next four or five months to kind of give us some reassurance that this is coming? I mean, I know our fingers are crossed, but as we're looking through our budget now, it'd be hard to absorb that amount, certainly going forward next year.
It absolutely would be. And because this is something that our country is hosting, not just our region, that's why we've made that federal request. I think our entire region will be expectant to hear something certainly by the end of the calendar year, if not sooner.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Deputy Chief, for your presentation. I do have a question regarding the, our street crimes unit. How are they doing and what, where is their position at now?
Street crimes unit is very active. I heard them on the radio today, out working on something. And they have, they're, they're not fully staffed, they're down one. And that is common almost universally in the agency. Most of the specialized units are down at least one person. We have active lists and we're commissioning six more people on Thursday. So as we get those folks trained and get them out in the field and ready to handle calls on their own individually, what we do internally is we go to each division major and tell us what your priorities are. And once they give us their priorities, we balance those and determine where the next spot's going to go. And we fill those vacancies as we get folks trained and ready to move into them.
I appreciate everything you guys are doing over there, so keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
Thank you. I wanted to, can you back, go back to the personnel slide? So we've, we've done some hiring recently, I mean, since the end of last year. Can you talk about, even though we've hired, you know, all these officers, or your personnel number is still flat?
With the hire, or with the, the commissioning that's coming up, and then we have some conditional offers out, we're up over where we were, one of the things that we have to consider is we're not just hiring for where we are right now. We need to be recruiting and preparing for where we're going to be. We know that it takes a while, sometimes as long as 18 months, to get folks in the door, trained, out on the road, on their own. At a bare minimum, it's a year without any backing of that hiring process. So it's a six-month academy and a 14-week FTO program without any extensions or anything. So it takes that amount of time from the start date in the academy till the time they're releasable out on their own to serve as a police officer in a car by themselves. If we are not predicting what our staffing's going to be two years from now, we're way behind. So we really need to be recruiting and moving in that direction as we can. Obviously, we're going to do the best we can with the people and the resources that we have and we'll, again, just be very deliberate in the approach that we take to filling these positions.
Thank you.
Anyone else have other questions? Okay, great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. All right, Mr. City Manager, final for the, this evening is finance and the law department.
Yes, I will ask our Director of Finance, Melissa Cabrera, to come give the presentation both for the finance department and then law as well.
Thank you.
There we go. There we go, okay. Good evening. I am Melissa Cabrera. I am the Director of Finance. And so I am here to give a presentation for that. Let me just queue that up. So I have actually gone in, updated our mission statement, and despite what my colleagues have said, mine is still wordy even with it being updated. So the finance department assures the city's financial health by responsibly managing resources, fostering innovation and efficiency in service delivery, and leading with integrity and collaboration to meet both the challenges of today and the opportunities of tomorrow. And I have tied in two pieces of our strategic plan here, both with a high-performance organization. So we operate as an ethical, high-performance organization, anticipating future needs, utilizing best practices, and striving for continuous improvement, as well as a financially sustainable organization. We create long-term financial stability by using equitable and sustainable sources of funding for city services and we deliver them in a lean and efficient manner. So the finance department's accomplishments. So this past year, we presented to you an annual audit that resulted in zero reportable conditions. And then the next two items here, we work very hard in this department to come up with both a budget document and an ACFIR that meet the Government Finance Officers Association standards for delivering the audit to the community as well as the budget. It is very important for that communication piece that we do this annually so that we are able to update both you and the public on where we stand. This most recent year, we assisted the city manager's office and the fire and police departments on MDFB financing. This is three new fire stations, but it is a new fire station, two remodels, and then the remodel of the IUC building for the police station. We worked with tech services and community to development to include the finance department on business license approval processes. This is also related to what we do with our TIFs, reporting that income, making sure that those revenues go to both, both those bonds. But it's also important for us from a revenue generation perspective, just to make sure that businesses that are new in the city are registering with the Missouri Department of Revenue and that they are also registered in the proper taxing districts. We are currently soliciting bids to gather options to conduct city sales tax audits. This is just ensuring that, again, people, while we get caught up, making sure people are reporting to the proper taxing districts and that we are collecting the proper revenues from them. And then we also implemented, implemented a new plan for the Prop PD Sales Tax Initiative and calculations for costs of IPD salary increases. And lastly, we worked with the Community Development Department to develop a pamphlet that will go to vendors at the Santa Calagon, just making sure that people are being properly licensed for that event. So this is the organization chart. So over on the left side, you can kind of see our accounting processes there with, we have two accounting managers, some accountants, account specialists that do payables, accounts receivable, treasury, that sort of thing. And then over on the right-hand side, you see contract and bid administrator, so this is our procurement side. And then we have our budget made up, budget team made up of two individuals there, a staff assistant. And then part of this proposed budget is a contract specialist that would work alongside our procurement team. So in the 2425 adopted budget, we had 16 staff members. You will see we are requesting to increase that to 17 next year with the addition of that contract specialist position. In addition to this, we have one employee in our law department that works as a paralegal. And then that person is split in the ERP fund, just like the finance department is, so that Fund 95, as well as they perform some functions in our workers' comp fund and our risk management fund. Significant budget changes. So we identified cost-saving measures in the current fiscal year that allowed us to offset internal service charges for fiscal year 2526. This was not just the finance department, but also human resources went through this process, communications and technology services. This allows us, if you're not that familiar with how we operate, we are an internal service department. We provide services for the other outward-facing departments and then they are charged for those services. So this year, we went through, revised it to try to find budget savings because we are generally reimbursed from prior year actual expenses. And then you can also see, and we'll talk about this as a budget package on the next page as well, but the addition of a contract specialist is a significant change just because that is in addition to headcount. So you can see here that there has been some increase from fiscal year 2425 with the adopted budget. Initially, there was going to be some change of staff to other departments, ended up not happening. And so that staff stayed within the finance department. And so you can see that reflected in the estimated expenditures. We have some positions that we have not yet been able to fill in this current fiscal year that will be, that are expected to be filled next year. So that's why you see an increase. I really like to do more of a comparison just because last year was kind of an odd year for expenses, to compare it to the fiscal year 2324. So you can see with some of those budgetary savings that we have a fairly moderate, modest increase for fiscal year 2526 compared to 2324. So the budget packages that have been approved so far and made it into the proposed budget, again, that contract specialist, and then also $40,000 for some software that will help us in the development of our budget book as well as the annual comprehensive financial report. As far as the ACFIR goes, this is a recommendation from our auditor. So both of these documents are extremely labor-intensive for our staff to put together each year. And, you know, if you can only imagine in the budget book, changing one table changes at least two to 10 others. It just depends. So the software should help us streamline that process and reduce workload on, on existing And that's my presentation.
Very good. Any questions? Please proceed.
I can only imagine the amount of work that goes into this. I know we've already had multiple versions of this. Every time somebody different looks at it, they're like, have you considered? What about this? So we appreciate the work. I know that Alex is new and so you got to come into raising someone else's children, essentially taking on someone else's accounting. Can you talk to me about how you will transition to this new software? Like, does this get loaded in there? Is it all done manually? Who triple-double checks it? Are the departments responsible for making sure you have the correct information? Because... Because this is our bible for the next year, and I just would love to understand your process.
It's a combination. I mean, we try to get our eyes on it as much as possible, but just because we only have two people in budget. I try to, have tried to assist as much as I could, just because I came from that position previously. And so we do depend on staff to look through this for us. You know, it can get really tricky with some of the departments, because they know their nuances, they know their budget. We do try to look at it as much as possible, but it is definitely a team effort. It's not something that just the finance department or the budget team can just take credit for, because it takes a tremendous amount of staff from all the departments to put this together.
So can you speak to how you're going to transition to your new software?
Sure. So, I mean, a lot of that's just going to depend on what we end up choosing. As far as the, you know, the budget go, we're not looking for a new budget software. We're looking for something that can just pull in the numbers that we're looking for. So most likely, this would be something that we would be downloading a report, or we might have an Excel table that we generate, that would then be put into software that knows basically how to apply it. So, I mean, it's going to be a considerable effort initially, just because we will have to put in our chart of accounts. For us to generate something that's similar to what we do now, if you can imagine, when we show you what salaries are, that's not just like a single object code for salaries, that pulls in salaries. It might pull in overtime, it could pull in other pays and special pays, and all kinds of things go into that. So at the beginning of it, yes, it's going to take a little bit of time. We will have to be selective when we choose that software and make sure that it's something. Ideally, we have a couple recommendations for software that will do both of these, and then that should help to kind of reduce some of the setup, if it's the same thing, and we can just set up our chart of accounts in at one time.
Okay. Will it also pull in from Dayforce? Because, you know, we've asked lots of questions about staffing numbers, et cetera, and I know that this is a completely separate system, which is adding extra complexity.
It does add extra complexity. This, the budget book software and the ACFIR software would not function in that capacity. So you heard Jason Newkirk tell you that he is hiring an additional sysadmin, or system admin, that would be responsible for helping us tie Dayforce into Munis.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further questions? Please proceed.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mayor. So just for my own point of clarification, during the police department discussion, I believe that we were, the conversation got turned into a little bit of the logger's payment, which I got my mind twisted up with the retiree health insurance. So as the line items are going through, that retire, that's, the retirees' health insurance is its own line item coming out of the general fund, doesn't have anything to the loggers. For some reason, so that got me screwed up in my mind. So that's helpful, and thank you for the clarifications, as you're nodding there. So just for context, so retiree health insurance contribution from the police department is like 2.3 million, and you guys are like 231,000, is what I'm looking, okay.
Yes.
So that helps me with my clarification.
Great.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Please proceed.
I just want to, so for some of your benefit, I spent the afternoon with Melissa and Alex, basically all afternoon, asking them questions about, I just want to say thank you for that time, and you asked, that's why I'm not asking near as many questions now as I would have been. So I just want to say thank you for your work on that, and I appreciate your efforts, so that's all.
Thank you.
Anyone else have other further questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll echo Councilman Fierce, yeah, thank you for spending the times that you have this week and last week to try to give us up to speed and answering some of our questions. And I'm sure we're going to have plenty more as we keep moving through this. So thank you for your availability.
I would just say, we will always make time, you will be priority on the schedule. We want you to understand the budget, and so then it can be communicated to the public through you. It's very important to me that we have time to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one more clarification.
Absolutely, please proceed.
This is a draft budget, so I just want people to realize that this is a budget in evolution, and there may be changes or corrections, so this is not the bible that you take home. The one we vote on is the one that's the final version. Thank you.
Anyone else have other further comments, questions? Mr. City Manager, great job, thank you very much, and you did great work for all of this. I know you've been working hours and hours and hours on this, I know it's an incredibly task, and so thank you very much, well done. Pardon me? Oh, you are going to talk about law, we're not completely done, so.
Yeah. And I don't think, I should have combined it with my presentation, I didn't, but I have, give me just a second, I wrote some notes down for law, so that we could talk a little bit about it. So law is extremely basic, like I said, we have one employee that is in that department that is a paralegal. And then the majority of the expenses in that org are 540,000 for legal services. So this goes to the various attorneys or firms that the city may retain, you know, depending on what issues we're having. And then there are some additional modest expenses in there, about $2,000 for training, and then a few hundred dollars for dues and things like that. So I apologize that I don't have that, that little chart up there for you for that one.
We won't hold it against you.
But if anyone wants to look at it, let me tell you really quickly what page it's on in the.
It's 151 in the budget, and 151 and 152 in the budget.
Yep, 152. So you can see there that .82 of a person, then if you look in Funds 92 and 93, each of those has .09 of a person. So that's where that one whole person comes into play. And then you can see the salaries there for that, and other operating expenses, again, is that breakdown that I gave, that I just gave you, that we provide to other attorneys in place of having a actual city on-staff attorney.
So if I were to ask this question, the contract is roughly 500,000, 600,000, that range, if I'm looking on the program fund on page 152?
There's about 540,000 that we pay for legal services, and then those go to three separate, the bulk of it, I will tell you, about 400,000 is for, like, our main legal services, and then we have a couple of other things that we have attorneys for.
Okay, very good, thank you. Anyone else have other further questions? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. City Manager, the, thank you very much for both the finance and the law presentation, so excellent job, well done. Mr. City Manager, the floor is yours, anything to wrap up, or any other ideas or thoughts you want to clarify or add to the conversation?
Just a word of thanks, Mayor. I know these two nights are certainly longer than our typical work session, so I appreciate the council's indulgence, your thoughtful comments, and certainly the helping us work our way through these 287 pages to ensure we get everything accurately recorded. So I look forward to seeing you all tomorrow evening.
Well, and I want to say thank you to you and your staff, because, you know, you suggested this, I thought it was a great idea, I know the rest of the council thought it was a great idea, and I think it's just so important for us to go through every department, every department head here, to come and talk about it, and I think is really critical for the entire city to do that. So I just, I think it's very important. So with that being said, unless there's anyone else that has anything else they want to add, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.